All right, it's about thirty. We'll get started. Welcome to everybody. I have too many visitors today. Good. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from September nineteenth.
So moved.
Motion. And second. Are there any corrections? Okay, I'll. You posed. We do not have any further comments today, so we'll skip over that. Couple of things on my report. Chelsea's not in here, but I wanted to congratulate Chelsea and the Capes staff for scoring a hundred on the health score this time. I saw it in the paper last week, so we appreciate all of them and what they're doing. All the staff members, what they're doing to keep that health score up. Cynthia's not here, and I wanted to congratulate Cynthia Spittler on her retirement. Sad to see her go, but excited for that chapter in her life. And hopefully you read Manny's report and some of the highlights of her seven and a half year of career here at the library. Logan, Manny and I attended the trustees workshop at Art Circle Library. I don't know how Logan feels, but I felt like it was probably the best one that I've attended there this year. They did a session on succession planning and hiring new staff. Capturing that institutional knowledge that you try to do anytime that you're hiring staff in businesses and institutions. Also had a session on emergency notebooks kept by key staff and director. And Manny has one, and he calls his truck notebook in case you get hit by trucks. They called it in case you get hit by a bus. So that was good advice. They would have a session on a year in the life of a library board member, and they included samples of annual calendars. Hiring a new director, we could have had that a couple of years ago. That would have been very helpful to have that. And then Jamie Ritter, who's the state librarian and archivist, got up and talked about the public library service agreement that we signed and some of the changes in that. When I first read that service agreement in July, it really kind of irritated me. It made me a little upset about the, some of the wording in it, but he explained it in a way that it was in a positive way, and it, things that were included in there are things that, that most libraries are already doing and most boards. We're already, we already have a collection development policy. We're already doing all those things. So they tried to include things in there just to show that what our libraries are actually doing. So that made me feel a little bit better about some of the decisions in that library service agreement. And we had a session on Friends 101 by Kathy Dooley Smith, who's the president of the Friends. And she always, I think she spoke last year, too. She always has some good tips for working with the friends and friends working with us. So. And another couple of things, the Friends proclamation and brunching is at ten thirty Thursday. Those of you that can attend and help, we appreciate that. And thanks to the board and the staff for providing the refreshments and everything for that. In-service for staff is on November tenth, and we'd like to provide the refreshments for them as well. So if you all can help in any way on November tenth, let me know, and I'll make arrangements, and you'll pick up stuff and bring it in and whatever needs to be done. So you all can just contact me or talk to me after the meeting today. Manny is working on the maintenance of effort document that has to be signed by the three governments. That's a challenge sometimes to catch those people in the right place at the right time, but that is due, I think, on October thirty first, isn't it?
Yeah, they met yesterday with Carrie and Brian from finance, and they know we need this signed immediately, so they're gonna get it to us.
And the last thing. The directory evaluation timeline is coming up. Manny's currently working on accomplishments and things that he's been working on. And I'll be sending that evaluation document out sometime early December. I think that's the timeline from last year. Do you remember that December electronically? And if you want a paper copy instead of electronically, you just let Summer know, and she'll run paper copies for you as well. And then probably have a deadline sometime early January, mid-January, so that we can have that ready for the February meeting. And I do have some of the handouts from our session in Art Circle. If anybody wants to look at those, or if you want copies of any of this stuff, after you look at it, just let me know, and we can get Summer to run those for you. And that's all I have on my reports. Manny, wanna go next?
Sure. I'm going to begin in youth services as I typically do. I was in attendance on Saturday for the eclipse. And I know the weather wasn't at a hundred percent, and we had a lot of people here. We had two thousand glasses, and we had sold out of them right around noon. We had a good crowd. One of our patrons who brings his telescope usually on Saturdays, he was parked out in the front lot and had a group of people there with a filter so you could see the eclipse. And I got glasses myself. It was really a lot of fun. The next big one is in April, and that's, I don't know if it's gonna be going through Tennessee, but I know it's gonna go through the New England area, but it was a lot of fun. We had a, we had a really good turnout. We had people calling from all over that wanted some glasses. That was good.
I think that was great one six or seven years ago.
Yeah, that's what I heard. Yeah, that it was around here. Yeah.
Go to school that day.
And let's see, so this Saturday is the Fall Festival. So hopefully, and it looks like the weather's gonna be nice, if you're interested. I don't know what time the football game is, but this is during the day. I don't know, the Alabama U T games. Okay, so yeah, it'll be, it'll be over by then, but. That's a big game. We, I just wanted to point out, I really don't touch on the team and how wonderful their programs are doing, but just wanna point out, on Tuesday nights, tonight is the Dungeons and Dragons program that they have every, every week. And it's really gaining steam, more participants there, so that's great. It's good to see teams come out and enjoy things like B and D, and we have karaoke and other things. Thank goodness that room is back to a hundred percent, so it's great to see. Over in adult services, we had a local voices program two weeks, two Saturdays ago, when fifty, which turned to be fifty-nine local authors came. And that was an excellent event, very well attended. We're gonna tweak it next year. We're gonna have it again next year, a few little tweaks here and there. But overall, it was fantastic. We had a storytelling program that was very well attended. There were great lineups in the newspaper, and the attendance was fantastic for that. Thank you. Then we also had a square dancing program, which was very well attended. And in fact, my wife and I on Tuesday night still square dancing now in Illinois City. So after the meeting, I'll be driving down to Illinois City for square dancing. It was a lot of fun. We're gonna do it again next year, too. Over in hospitality, the drink of the month is practical magic. But I did not put down the ingredients because I butchered it last month. It's not an ice cream, am I correct? Okay, and Chelsea's not here for that, but yeah. But like to echo what Stephanie said, they did score a perfect one hundred in the cafe. So that was, that was excellent, excellent. I know Chelsea was extremely happy about that. Another thing Stephanie has mentioned is Cynthia Spittler retiring from patron services. So the job has been posted, and we are seeking qualified candidates. I think we have a good list so far. The deadline is, it's Friday. And once that closes, we'll start interviews and hopefully get the next patron services manager after Thanksgiving or sometime in December, so.
Does anybody have any questions about the financial report?
Could I just say one, two more quick things?
Sure, absolutely.
One thing I wanna do, which couple of things in 2024, I definitely wanna revisit the book module. And I also would like a storybook walk in Townsend. So they have them in Knox County, they're really successful, and I reached out to Danny Williamson about some suggestions where we could have this storybook walk. So hopefully I have more updates on that in the near future. The remote locker, there was a delay last week. It is being delivered tomorrow morning at Lewisville Town Hall at nine AM. Next week, there will be training, and then the week after that, we will have a wrap on it. So we're looking at the second week in November to have a grand opening or celebration. So we'll definitely, board will be definitely invited Biblioteca, Alcoa, Kuanis, Arconic, the town of Lewisville, they'll definitely be invited, the Alderman. So we're really looking forward to that.
Any questions?
What's the storybook?
So they are, and we had them here when we had Santa Claus. It was kind of like a modified storybook walk. They are little, I don't know. What would call those things, displays? Yeah, you put them in the ground, and it's just a story, so the kids and families will walk, you know, through a park or something, and they'll, you know, story, and they read it, yeah.
Okay, so you're gonna do this in Townsend?
Yeah.
Okay, so I think that's a great thing, but you know, my church, Fairview, is building a community park on Old North Ferry Road.
Oh, really?
We're in the process of building. We just got the pavina, but I think that might be another great place, because I can see, I can envision that park and walking trail being accessed by that end of the community, you know, that end of Blunt County by the families walking and playing, because there's gonna be playground equipment and a walking trail and the pavilion and restrooms. And I mean, it'll be another year or two, but.
Oh, I'd love that idea.
Get it refined in Townsend, and then maybe we can.
We've got so many places around now.
So.
Well, the basis of it is kind of permanent, you know, that you put stuff in in the ground, but you can take the books out and move them to a different location, or that's what, that's what we talked about. We would really like to see it so that you could move them to different areas of the county. And you might have to take them up in the wintertime. I don't know. We're just now exploring. They've got several in Knox County. They've got a new one. I know it's in Loudoun County that just opened up. Yeah, so, so this is not new, but it's kind of new to our area, and.
Yeah, New England had them, and they did because of the snow. They did have to.
So they could probably stay in our place.
Yeah, they had to worry about the plows, you know.
Yes, and I can send you some of the sites that I had.
One of the local channels too had them.
And I think it was, there was even a grant at the state, the literacy organization or something, the state was providing something, so. Bill Claybo brought my attention about his last year. Bill Claybo with the Land Conservants.
Yeah. I would ask Chelsea in youth services, and she couldn't pick out. I know when Santa was here was a Christie story, but I would let her pick out, yeah.
And you can change.
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, you could do, you could do different ones for every month or every three, two months or something.
That's really cool.
Yeah, use land power. So we're just, we're just kind of figuring this out.
Manny, I do think that there would be a lot of local businesses interested in sponsoring it, like the plaque, you know, with if you need funding for it.
Would that, oh, yeah, I mean, I wonder if that would, well, the foundation's not here, and that would fall under there.
Or the Friends.
It would be.
Friends, yeah, definitely.
It's something so tangible that we could burneries on, I think, and so don't waste that opportunity, yeah.
Yeah, oh, yeah, they would be, definitely, maybe for each.
For the Blacker.
I'd love that.
Good idea.
It's a good day. I like that. Yeah.
Things I was in the county.
Maybe Smith.
Rubbermaid.
Yeah. Rubbermaid is down there on.
Oh, yeah, yeah, William Blunt. The book return, we're kind of giving up.
So right now, the book return project, the architect, Johnson Architect, Architectural Inc., they are working on the design plans. It takes about six weeks. They've already started on it, so we're looking at the end of October. So hopefully, fingers crossed, at the November meeting, we'll have the design, and hopefully it can go for a vote. So we just, once, once the board votes on it, then it goes right to purchasing, so then they can put it out for bidding.
That's great.
Yeah. It's a long time coming.
It is.
Can I ask you a question on the book drop for Lewisville?
Yeah.
Do you have, you saying that you're buying a remote locker for book drop?
Yes.
And who's paying for it?
So we're, we're paying for it.
We being the library?
The library, yeah. Yeah, the outdoor lot, originally, we're gonna have it indoors, and it came with a indoor book return. But Mary Pugh felt like, because there's only open, it's like eight to four thirty, to have it outside. Well, the, the outdoor one does not come with the book return, so we have to buy a book return.
Is it waterproof?
Yes, oh, yeah, waterproof. That has Wi-Fi on it. Some, we're not getting the one with the camera, but you can get a camera inside, yeah.
And what budget is that coming out of?
I'd have to ask Angina exactly which budget, but she's handling something, so, but we have in our budget to pay for that, yeah.
Any other questions for Manny? Man is not here. They did not have a, a meeting last month. They do have one scheduled for Friday of this week. So we'll touch base with, with foundation.
Notice the question on the finance. Notice that the salaries were so low. Why, why are they?
Could you ask when Angina gets back? She'll. That's okay, that's okay. Yeah, I don't wanna say the wrong. Yeah. Yeah, we'll tell you that.
All right, there you are, from the Friends.
All right, so we're having some fun this week with the Friends Week. We've had cookies and candy out on the table by the elevator. And downstairs, we've had it for the volunteers as well. Today, we had Simply Juice because they're simply wonderful. And tomorrow, we have some special little gift that we're not going to tell anybody about yet for them. And then Thursday for the brunch and the proclamation. And Friday, we also have some more sweet treats for, for everybody. So we're having a little fun under the heading of Friends Helping Friends. I reported last time that we had gone to Ripley, Tennessee, and Ripley has actually had quite a few sales. So we're very proud of them. They're very, doing very well, adding more books to the, to their eBay site. So, and we've been trying to push the eBay site out on our site as well as on our social media, so they get a few more hits. Along that same line, Seymour Library has come to us and asked for assistance to help them set up an eBay store. They had got some very large dollar donations, not monetary, but books. Some very nice sets that had, excuse me, worth, you know, a couple of hundred dollars each. So they were trying to come up with a date, and their librarian is gonna come as well, so I'll let you know, Manny, when we come up with a date. I guess their librarian has never been here, so she's gonna come. It may be a Saturday because she, she's Monday third.
Where's Seymour Library?
Down Chapman Highway. You go to the red light at the end of four eleven, turn left. Down there, kind of past Kroger, kind of a little side road back in there. It's just about this big.
Yeah, and like many of the other libraries, they have space issues. So we were talking about what, you know, what was the minimum that they would need. You know, my view would be you need four bookcases, but we'll see how it goes. Yeah, and Victorville, California, I guess the Friends president was out here visiting a friend, and he also contacted us. They would like to get online. And, you know, Diane and I said, you know, we're up for a trip to California. He, he got back to me and said their relationship with their trustees and their county is not that great, and they won't let them sell online. Yeah, I'm, I'm really surprised. He's really disappointed, but.
Which, which county was it?
I don't know the county. It's Victorville, California.
Something New York, yeah.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's a pretty good sized town, but. Yeah. Yeah, I guess it's a bad relationship. And they tie their hands. In terms of sales, eBay's, we did about eleven thousand last month. We're actually down a little bit this month. They were trying to look at some of the eBay algorithms to see if there's anything going on with our promotions. I mean, Diane said, did you change a promotion? I go, no, man, didn't change anything. So, so we're looking into it. A funny story, the library had some, when they changed the printers, they had some toner cartridges. So they said, can you sell them? I go, I don't know, let me see. So I figured it out, put it on eBay. Before I could get them on the shelf, they all sold. Like, just like that, two hundred bucks. So, yeah, and then Angina, they found some more, and so we've got those listed. One sold last night, but there's two or three more that haven't sold. So, yeah, our toner cartridges just go like that. Who knew? Other than that, usual stuff, getting busy. I might have some stuff around my house if you wanna. We sell some, you know, we do get some odd donations, and we generally, we sell them at the sale, when, when we, especially around the holidays, you know. We've got this little crystal bell that somebody put in the box, you know, we're trying, well, okay, we'll try to sell it. We sold a plate last month, we just sold some, whatever they give us.
Substance Christmas village.
Oh, yeah, we still have a few pieces left of the sims.
How many are you guys expecting on Thursday for the event?
Normally, when we have one of these events, we have about forty-five to fifty people.
Okay.
The usual crowd, yeah.
And the, the reading of the resolution will be in the main gallery, and then here will be the brunching. And then at six thirty on Thursday evening, the resolution's gonna be read at the commission meeting.
Right, that's great.
Very good.
Thank you, Dee.
I think you all probably got the email from Liz, that she could not be here tonight, but she did include the report that is in your packet with the reads, statistics, as well as the brochure about some of the offerings and the grants and things like that that are going on, so. Committee updates regarding long-range plan. And we'll talk about that maybe a little bit more down at the bottom if we're gonna have a meeting scheduled next month. Andy's trying to get a meeting scheduled with the.
Yeah, it was my, my fault. I should.
No, that's okay.
Would the building inspectors of Bearville come in and talk to us? And you wanna have Dee?
Yeah, Dee will be there, yeah.
Yeah.
So they're available next week. What is, if there's a dates, what we'd like to do is take a look at the downstairs and see if there are anything, is there anything that we need to add to the downstairs in order to be able to open it to the general public? I don't know what, I don't know what the rules are. I know it's based on popular.
How many people you have. You gotta be able to get to the exit within so many seconds.
Right, and so, so I thought it would be better to have them come over, come with us and go over everything.
There should, there should be a life safety plan in the original drawings.
Yeah.
Building, I'll think. The person who has those is Chris.
Interesting, the inspector didn't know, the head inspector didn't know where the library was. So I hope he's new.
This is the city or the county? This is the city or the county? City.
So, Andy, this is just for what exists today, right? You're talking about having, having it so you know what we have down there and down. And while we, when we go into the big, we rebuild, I mean, all that should be, you know. We're gonna, when we redo the downstairs, go with the foundation, all of that will be addressed.
In the plans, taking into consideration of the plan.
What, emergency exits and.
It's called a life safety.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so many fire extinguishers, and you have to be able to, unrestricted access to whichever door.
Currently, right now, it's.
It's kind of.
Are we, are you, are you looking for right now?
I mean, right now, we have an exit, but we have stairwell.
If, if we expand.
But if I only allow forty people there, and if you're trying to put a hundred in, that would figure out.
I think we're.
How to add doors or exits.
When we get a hundred or two hundred people downstairs, we may have a problem.
I'm just.
So.
As an example.
There's only one set of double doors on that. And I think, which ain't gonna cut it, so. Put the elevator in, that's gonna cut it in.
That won't come either.
So it's, so you're probably limited already.
But hopefully, they looked at this when they built the building, I know.
Don't count them.
Well, I don't know, because I didn't look at the backwards.
Well, I know, very great.
Downstairs?
Oh, downstairs, really. But they didn't need it, because there's no lactation, no ice, that's downstairs.
That was probably a value engineer now.
Yeah.
That's, it's cost money.
Yeah.
Plus, that is.
Yeah, if, if we occupy, we absolutely have to.
But if you do put restrooms, then you've gotta put a grinder pump and pump it up, because it's below the sewer line.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's it. That was considered in the plan when we, when we had a plan for the bathroom.
Yes, yes, the initial budget I did a couple of years ago, had that in there.
Yeah.
That budget's.
So anyway.
Yeah.
So hopefully, in the next couple of weeks, we'll have.
Maybe, maybe, and.
So afterwards, get together, we could pick a days, a couple of days.
Let's just go ahead then and skip down here, and do we want to meet an hour ahead of time at our November meeting just to kind
Meet an hour ahead of time at our November meeting, just to kind of pull this together, because I think you all should have got. Copy of the workshop notes from summer, did you get those?
I did the whole chat.
Okay, it, cause you sent them out like a day or two after the workshop.
I did.
So we have these notes from the workshop and do we think we'll be ready to talk about? That it's a No- November meeting or do we need to wait till January or February? What's your else's desire?
I think we should talk about it, we may not get too far, we should have.
Yeah.
We we didn't finish, right? Is that correct? Did we finish the whole plan discussing it?
We we finished, I think everybody's part except for, you know, just the actually what is downstairs, you know, and and this.
That won't affect downstairs unless you build offices out there.
Well, this will affect, yeah, cause you're talking about, you you weren't here at our workshop meeting. So you may not have gotten these notes. Okay, um yeah, that will affect the downstairs if we if we expand and and. Uh put the genealogy down there or meeting rooms or. Need bathrooms and elevator and all all of that stuff.
Yeah, yeah, we have restrooms.
So and and we thought we really wanted to to get some conceptual drawings of what some of this could look like. So that we could share that with the foundation soon as possible. Nothing exact, but but sometimes the pretty pictures are what kind of sells uh as far as fundraising is concerned, so. I don't, I don't know if we'll be close to that, uh but I think I do think we need to keep moving a little bit forward there.
I do think everything starts with the basement, for the big projects, you get the basement and then that frees up space upstairs. So I think the basements, for the big projects, basement's top priority, cause then you can. If we move genealogy down there, well, then there's space there, would we move computers over there, you know, so you.
Manny, we kind of identified that restrooms and downstairs was like priority number one, right, is kind of.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you need, yeah.
I think we, I mean, I think talking about it is good, is this something that we stamp and sign, you know, like what's the? Goal of the document, is it a working document or is it fixed?
I think until we get an architect really involved in the dis- whole design process, which that takes funding as well. Are we gonna move forward and and expand in that basement or not? Like that's the decision we have to come to. And what's gonna go down there?
Right, this might be a better conversation for later, but I can see having a mission statement on whatever our long range plan is, if the basement is the focus, then the mission statement is. Here's what we're doing in the next five to ten years, let's get the basement running. And everything else, if everything else is already kind of estimated to revolve around that effort.
And that would help the foundation.
So, um. We've got to appalling the board, move the November uh meeting from the twenty first of November to the fourth thing now. We just wanted to check to see if you're all scheduled, that that twenty first is the Tuesday before. Thanksgiving and just to be sure that that we were okay on the twenty first. So I think most of you are shaking your heads that you're okay on the twenty first. Yeah. Okay, so we don't need to move that meeting, we'll have it on the twenty first. And then do we wanna come in at four thirty then and talk about the the long range? Plan and just to see kind of what our next steps are at four thirty on the twenty first. So we good four thirty on the twenty first, okay?
Are those public meetings?
They are, yeah, uh and then while we're doing that, do we want to also uh? Cancel the December board meeting, we typically have not had a December board meeting several years.
They've had the twelve.
Motion on that. Be the nineteenth, wouldn't it? I move that we cancel the December nineteenth Board of Trustees meeting.
Nice, that good.
All in favor, uh opposed?
I'm going anyway, so.
Okay, we skipped around a little bit there.
We're in Santa Claus, girl.
You have a brochure there, I think. Uh gift committee update? Logan, is there any updates from the gift committee?
Not heard of any.
Okay. The last I heard about the Joy Bishop thing was it's just gonna take time for them to get the plaques done for the the. Bridge and all that, so. Uh we might find out a little bit more Friday at the foundation meeting, because I think Carolyn is supposed to be at the foundation meeting to talk. To the foundation, Carolyn Forster. So we may have a little bit more information, but I I think this is gonna, process is gonna take a little bit of time. Uh plus, I don't think the sculpture is ready and so there's a lot of moving parts here that have to be coordinated.
We're twenty eight for the operation.
No, I don't think so, I think it's, yeah, yeah, you know, that you involve the city. And city officials and there's just a lot of different people that they're just trying to coordinate right now, so. Okay, uh under old business, proposed collection development and waiting materials policy, we spent a lot of time talking about. Uh this policy, which is probably the most important policy that we approved, and I appreciate everybody's input. On that last month, cause I think I think we've got a pretty good document here. So let me go ahead and get a a motion in a second and then we'll talk about uh that, can I get a motion to approve this? Second. Okay, any discussion or any questions, there are a few things, I think Manny, you might need to address. Change any changes after our schedule last month.
So one of the changes. And I spoke to the state librarian about about this one, um. And he was fine with that, what added, one of the items that was added in the policy was. Uh the uh concerned citizen can only challenge three books for. Kind of the challenge of the first book, so if they challenge a book on November first twenty twenty three. They have three challenges until November first twenty twenty four.
Year.
And other libraries are doing that now. So that that was, that was the big one that was um added, and that again, that was a discussion. With um the state librarian, he felt that that was fine about the, actually, he. I attended a webinar, he actually brought this up, um if we are hit with multiple challenges at once, that. We do reserve the right to extend thirty days, if I get fifteen challenges, I can't, no one can read that on the law. I can extend that.
Well, you don't, we don't have enough books, I mean.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah, it would, and if they're adult books or white, I mean, if they're not like their picture books that we're getting, so.
Some of those books are large.
Yeah.
Any other questions or discussion about that, um collection development and reading materials policy?
Is it, uh sorry, just just based on what you just said, is that, is that? Sorry, my laptop behind, is that written in the policy that you have, we can extend the thirty days?
Yes, yes.
As long as that's in there.
Although can the patron, I think there was someone that I don't wanna relive the thing, but I think it, the patron has some time to. Like if you reject their request, then they only have a limited amount of time, and life happens and that's. Yeah, which seemed to work, it seems like they should have flexibility as well, but yeah, I understand. You're good. Which will build flexibility on our end, but not their end, like life would.
Well, they don't have to do anything, submit submit a a request, you know, so it's like a a matter of just sit down and type in. An email and saying, you know, that that I request the board review this, so. They've already done their part and read it and all that, I think, I think ten days is.
Ten, yeah, ten business days, I think.
Alright, I think I have a first and a second. Um all those in favor, uh any opposed? Uh I don't know if you noticed, under new business, we have the local history and genealogy, selection development and waiting materials policy. There were no corrections in that policy, no strikeouts, no red marks, uh not anything, so I would like to. Go ahead and uh get that policy approved at this meeting, so we don't have to carry that over to the next meeting. That's, we can do that, I'd like to have a motion. Right, is there any discussion or questions about that policy? Okay, all in favor, uh any opposed? The other. Don't leave anything out, so.
Oh, I did have a question, I'm sorry. Uh can the appendix B and the the que- the request for photographic copies? It it asks for driver's license number, in the state of Tennessee, you have the. You also have to have the birth thing, otherwise you can't look it up. So uh that has to be added to that.
So under appendix B, request a photographic copy?
Add driver's license.
Oh, yeah.
So we should add in there? Okay.
It's on page seven, I see that, oh, yeah, yeah.
I almost wonder if it wouldn't be better if you just made a copy of their driver's license. You get both things on there, can you do that?
You do the doctor's office.
I do when I'm renting, it's scrawny too.
The problem is security.
Yeah, exactly, I.
I don't know why you have to have the birthday on the check.
You don't have to have it on the check, you can't look up the check without, you can't look up.
Write a check anymore.
You can't research anything, information, it's all filed by birthday.
Do you have, do we have a way that they can pay? debit card, credit card?
We don't have that.
PayPal.
PayPal, Venmo.
We don't.
We don't have a square.
Yeah.
Well, how do you pay for the drinks at the cafe?
So they do have um.
Square.
A square.
Why can't we utilize that same square account for some of our other? Something checking account.
Yeah, I'm sure we. You know what, we could, we would just have to train.
Yeah.
Yeah, we think that's, we could, we would, yeah, we would just have to.
We just have to get more devices.
When you, like, I think when I purchased, like, um. The bag for the um last year.
Yeah.
I paid with a credit card.
Yeah. And we can do that, yeah, I again, I, it's just. Try this.
Yeah, I think I'm thinking more about for the future, I mean, this might be.
Yeah.
Yeah. Nothing than a staff training come on for credit cards, but. The more we grow, the more you guys are gonna utilize that.
You know, so we're adding birthdays to this, is that what you're suggesting?
If you're gonna, if you're gonna take the check. And if you want the driver's license numbers, you can't look it up, so it's all good. You can't, you can have the the number, but you can't do anything with it.
Like if they get a bad check?
Yes.
You have to have the birthday.
You have to have the birthday.
So do we need to amend this?
Yeah, so that's on C two.
I'm in the appendix. We need to re- uh do the motion. I move that we accept this policy with the two changes. We do.
Well, Rudy, you have to withdraw the first motion.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, withdraw the first motion.
Yeah, we have to withdraw, yes.
And then you're making a new motion.
Yeah, to to add the changes. Who made that first motion? Dom? Okay, so Andy has to withdraw his motion. Okay, alright, we're good then. Thank you.
Good as Congress today.
A bridge, a bridge.
Okay, any any other discussion or any? Do I have a motion that we adjourn? Second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?